Hello, everybody. All right. I am going to open this meeting. As a preliminary matter, this is the Chair of Maynard School Committee. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Yes.
Jeff Ferranti.
He's muted.
Oh.
Oh. Is there someone?
Probably should unmute Wayne while we're at it, too.
Yeah, unmute. Yeah, that's a good idea.
And Jennifer.
Jennifer can unmute herself.
Oh.
Jeff, are you unmuted?
He's not.
Okay.
While we're doing that, do you want to remind folks that we asked if they don't mind turning off their video just so that we're...
Oh, so that the bandwidth isn't...
Well, it's a bandwidth thing, and it's also just so that we're able to know, so that the people that are joining can keep track of the primary presenter.
Okay, yes. And if everyone can turn off, anyone who's not participating in the meeting, if you could please turn off your video.
If you're participating and actively listening, we don't want to make people feel like they're not, but it's just one.
Right. And mute your microphones. All right, Jeff.
Good evening.
All right, here. Okay. Jennifer Goudat. And Jennifer.
She's muted, and so is Wayne, so...
Oh, my goodness. Here. I am here. Sorry, we're admitting and unmuting at the same time.
Brian Haas. Muted.
Brian's muted?
Yeah.
He is.
He's been asked to unmute.
And I am here.
Okay, Wayne White.
I am here.
Awesome. Okay. Good evening. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature a citizen's comment period. For this meeting, the Maynard School Committee is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website, and we are not having citizens comment because this is mostly an informational session, and the school committee just has to do one vote. This is not a regularly scheduled meeting. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen-share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Additionally, please let the Chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so, and if you are planning to record or broadcast, please raise your hand. If you know how to do that, in the participant box, and I will look to see if anyone is raising their hand. Or can I see that? Colleen, are you the only one who can see that?
I just looked, and no one seems to be raising their hand. Fred is raising his hand.
Okay. Fred, I do not see... Okay. Fred, are you going to be recording? Is there a way to unmute him?
We could also chat, Colleen or Jennifer.
I thought chat was turned off.
It's allowed to the host.
Okay. So someone can tell you if they're recording or broadcasting?
Yes, they can chat to Jennifer or to Colleen. Those are the two options for chat.
All right.
Private chat, to let them know.
Will you let me know, Colleen and Jen, if...
He is not recording.
Okay. All righty. Most of the supporting meeting materials that have been provided for the members of this body will be available on the Maynard Public School District website under School Committee Agenda, SC Agenda 2021, once we get them edited and ready to upload. We don't have final versions yet. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Documents can be found on the district's webpage at https://www.maynard.k12.mas.us/oh/maynard-public-schools/browse/142368. Meeting ground rules. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or emotions. Please hold off speaking until your name is called, and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, including colloquy with other members, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll-call vote. And with that, I open the meeting. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes. Okay, and I am opening the meeting and turning it over to Brian.
Excellent. Hi, everybody. I see we have a good crowd tonight. We hit three digits, which is nice, 102 people. So tonight's purpose is really, there's a couple of things on the agenda. The first being the school reopening plans that are required to be submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education this week. That's not our detailed, full plan. What it is, is an overview that the Commissioner has asked every district to send, and it's very limited. So the plan that we're submitting this week is simply, what would it look like if we all tried to come back? What would a hybrid version look like for Maynard? And what would a full-remote version look like for Maynard? In under 400 words. So it's very limited in terms of what he wants to read from each district. It's basically him, being the Commissioner, having each district do a quick study in terms of, what's your capacity? What are the size of your classrooms? How many kids do you have? And could you do those three options? What would they look like? So that's what we did. We discussed it last week. There's really no new information for that plan. But I want to be clear, that is not our plan for reopening. That is what we're required to submit to DESI to meet that July 31 deadline in terms of, what might you do? You will get this week a substantially more detailed plan, and I can tell you, given... So we have committees. We have a lot of committees working on every aspect of the three plans and all the parts of the three plans. So curriculum and safety, et cetera. Those are probably the two primary areas that we're really very focused on right now. Given those two areas, given... So we're going to submit this plan. What you'll get later this week is really, where are we headed? So it'll be a substantially more detailed document, which is not going to spend any time on, what if we brought everybody back? Because that's not going to be a recommendation by anybody right now, especially given the fact that, as everybody knows, we had to cancel graduation in the 11th hour. That was a hard decision to make, disappointing for many, but it was the right decision to make, given the safety concerns at the time. And so the plans that we're working on, the hard part is, they change literally every 24 hours. We get new guidance. I would say at this point, however, the good news is, we've gotten a substantial amount of the guidance that we expect from the Commissioner of Education. So at this point, we've gotten guidance on transportation, facilities and operations, general reopening. It's really, it's come through. That hasn't changed our draft plan in terms of the three options. So maybe before I go on to what's coming later this week, if the committee wants to take a vote on that draft plan that we're going to submit...
Can I just say one thing?
You...
First, Brian, someone is not muted, and I believe all it says is iPhone. So if you could please check and make sure that you are muted, because we're getting some background noise.
So I just muted everyone. Hold on, folks.
I'm back.
All right, you've got Beth Lynn and Brian. My apologies, everybody.
One by one, we'll get there with each person. Jennifer just has to find you and be able to unmute.
All right, we've got our Chair and our Superintendent unmuted. I will work on everyone else.
No, Chair is still muted. Lydia is muted.
Chair is still muted. You're so last-a-month right now, Jennifer.
No, she's not muted.
Okay, no, now I am. Now I am. All right, Natasha, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to... It came out of our Mass discussions last week, and they were very clear that if we are going to be voting on the draft plans, that part of the language should be that we are voting for the draft plans and the feasibility to make sure that we indicate that the draft plans are not, are non-binding. And so I just want to clarify for whoever makes that motion, that was, that was the guidance that we received from Mass.
Correct. Thank you, Natasha. All right, Brian.
So if somebody wants to make that motion, and I agree that it would be non-binding because things are changing so rapidly, that makes sense, then we could sort of move the conversation on to what's coming in the detailed plan, and we can talk about last Friday, and we can sort of carry the conversation a little bit further.
Great. Okay, I will accept a motion. Yes, Mary?
No, I just, so I had a question on exactly what it is that we're voting on, because Brian said 400 words. So is that your summary, Brian, that we got? Or is it the introduction, what are the key findings that the draft...
Yep. So it's 400 words per section within his template, and what you have is the template.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
So I will make a motion that we approve, the school committee approves, the draft preliminary opening plans and feasibility study, which are non-binding. That's it? I think that's it, huh? For reopening? I guess probably should say reopening.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll-call vote.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. Does anyone want to talk about it?
Are we discussing them, or no?
We talked about it the other night.
I mean, it's non-binding. It pretty much, it basically, what it is, is the state wanted us to prove we did our homework, and we're handing in an assignment for a check or a minus, and we're getting a check.
Okay, so could, yeah, I do have some discussion if allowed, please.
Okay.
There was some indication, because I know these were first viewed by the public last week. Is that correct? When we had our meeting, and there may have been some tweaks. Can you highlight what those tweaks were?
I think the... Go ahead, Brian, sorry.
I would say there was a typo at one point, where on the chart that talks about grade span, we inadvertently left off grade two. So it says in-person, pre-K, and grade one, and then hybrid should say two to five, which it will.
Yes, and I am on the actual document now, and it does say two to fives. The other, the other piece, just to note, in terms of, you know, the in-person and the hybrid, is that we are, this is still very much in the planning stages, and so I just want folks to know that. So while this may be the document that we submit to the state as of this Friday, it may change between now and then, because we're working on space issues and things like that with the buildings.
So the ones we have say three to five still, I think, in that, is that...
Right. Right. So the document, I'm actually on the Google Doc that we will use to submit, and I have a note for myself to check, and I did check. It does say for pre-K through one, in-person. For hybrid, it says two through five, six through eight, and nine through 12. So that is the difference between what you have in front of you and what we will be submitting and putting on to the website. We will upload a new draft.
Okay, and nothing else had changed from last week?
The transportation guidance didn't affect anything.
We did not incorporate the transportation guidance into this. We are still analyzing the numbers to figure out sort of what, what that means. We are, we believe, based on the current analysis of the numbers, that we will be able to offer remote, offer transportation to, to those students we are legally required to in a hybrid setting, if that makes sense. So we don't believe that we have to pull off from a hybrid opening because of transportation, because we won't be able to do so.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any further discussion? Mary?
I just had more of a logistic question, and I think maybe Jennifer, this is for you. So under the colored chart, you know, Group A and B, it says students will be enrolled in either Group A or B. Students in the same family will be enrolled in the same group. Is that physically possible?
Well, Mary, can we hold that discussion off until after? Because that's a more specific plan, and we're, we're only discussing the preliminary plan and voting on that right now?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a separate. We're going to that one next.
Okay.
Is there, when will we get the, I know we're meeting on the eighth, I mean, the sixth, right, of August is our next meeting? So we will have the final plans to us by the end of this week. Is that right, Brian?
You'll have a substantially more detailed plan. I wouldn't say it's the final plan, because it's two days from now, but it'll be substantially more detailed in all areas. So it'll really explain the transportation, the logistics, what each model looks like at each building.
So I just want to make sure that we, the school committee gets eyes on that more detail. That sounds like it's going to be pretty comprehensive.
You'll have it this week.
At least, okay, okay. Thank you. That's what I want to...
And also, there's more information coming in that needs to be accounted for that we don't have yet.
Yeah, I heard.
Okay. All right, so I'm, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to take a roll-call vote for those in favor. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yeah.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes. Okay. Now, Brian, let's go on to the next, do you want to discuss the second agenda item, which was the school year calendar reconsiderations, and just explain why we aren't going to be doing that tonight?
Sure.
And then go on to the plan.
Sure, we can do that. So the original suggestion was to change the opening date of school for students. We were originally thinking having professional development for staff from August 31 through September 3, and having students start on September 8. But that's dependent upon what the Commissioner says about how many days you legally have to do in the year. It's usually 180. There's discussions in the background right now, is that 180? Is that 170? So people have certainly put out there that it's 170. We also have heard from the Commissioner that he hasn't approved that, so I would say we don't know for sure.
Brian, actually, late-breaking, we just got it at...
Maybe we do.
5:50 something.
That would be late-breaking. So did he say yes to 170?
He did.
So then, and we don't need to vote on it tonight, because it wasn't listed as a voting item, but then that would push us to option B, which is actually good news, even if it became late-breaking. That would allow us the time to do professional development with staff from August 31 through September 11, which is really needed, and that would be really beneficial to all of us, and it would push the start date for students out to September 14, so parents can start planning that. But I'll bring that back, obviously, on August 6 for a formal vote from the school committee.
So we do not, we don't want to vote on that now? Because we had the options you had presented in there. The dates would be different than what you had...
They will not be different, I don't think, because I, truthful, I haven't seen the message from the Commissioner. I'd love to get eyes on that first.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Right.
So I have just a question, if I could. Is this professional development all going to be done remotely with the staff, or will it be in-school, in-person?
I don't think we've discussed that. I think it could be a combination of both.
Okay.
If we're headed toward a hybrid model, and we're talking about bringing students and staff back, this would be a great time to test those waters and see how that works.
Yeah. Personally, I think that would be great, because there's, I think there's still some staff that are feeling uncomfortable with the learning curve. You know, maybe person-to-person might, might actually help them, so...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Would that also prioritize certain groups of students who might benefit from coming back a week or two early, or would it just strictly be professional development?
At this point, it would be professional development, but we, literally, that obviously came out in the last 10 minutes.
Right.
Flushed it out completely. So we'll, and I understand that question. We will take a look at that.
Okay.
Okay. Natasha?
Um, what, so is the, I'm guessing the staff are really in favor of this later, recognizing the one, or the start date for September 14 for, for students, where professional development would go through the 11, correct?
Have they been polled?
This literally came out...
Right.
Three minutes before this meeting tonight, so...
Oh, I was just looking at the option B. I'm sorry. That was, I, okay, that was in the folder for today.
There has been discussion about, with the staff, around the need for additional professional development, and I, I would say that, yes, they are in favor of additional days to prepare for the beginning of the year. We have not done a formal poll. I've not heard a single staff member express an interest in starting sooner rather than later.
I will not ask any more questions, since we do not know yet.
Yeah. All right. Brian, would you like to go on to the more specific plan that we have?
Yeah, so really, we've ended up focusing on our hybrid model and taking into account all the medical advice and the guidance from the state in terms of how much time you spend in a room and how much time you spend with adults and cohort groups. We've really started to focus in on this hybrid model. And then, given the medical advice, we're looking at, can we do this in a way that keeps kids engaged but not sitting in a chair in a classroom in a cohort all day for six or six-and-a-half hours? Because that seems like a lot and uncomfortable. And then we're also taking into consideration, who can do remote and who really can't. So like our pre-K and our K, we think really need to be in the building to learn. That seems like a priority for us. Above and beyond, safety for everybody, that's the first one. And then we look at the academic component. So then we look at this hybrid model, and then we're trying to really flush out, can we do this in a way that gets students in the building for a certain amount of time so that there's a connection with the teachers, there's a connection with the academics, there's expectations, there's training, and then they can spend some time in the afternoon engaged remotely. So our overall, and there's a couple of pages, couple of pages. This page talks about Monday and Tuesday in the morning for Group A, they would be in school, and it will look a little different at Green Meadow versus Fowler versus the high school. But, and the high school's working on this, it's not as flushed out as the other schools yet. It will be. So this would have Group A taking classes in-person in the morning, hopefully getting a bagged or pre-made lunch that they take home with them, and then they would be engaged in the afternoon in a couple more classes, but it would be remotely. So they're only in school for about four hours with a mask and a chair and all the safety precautions in place. So it limits the amount of time they're in school, and it limits the amount of time that they're interacting with the teacher, and the teacher's limits the amount of time they're in the room. So in this model, the Monday, Tuesday, they're in school. In the afternoon, they're online. Wednesday ends up being a independent, remote day for everybody. Thursday, Friday, that same cohort is online in the morning, and Group B is in school. So if you go down, or is it the next page, Colleen? Can you go to the, there you go. That is... So that's what a schedule for students would look like. You can see Group A, so they're sort of, that eight till 12 is in-person. They get to see the teacher, they get to make those connections. Whoa, that thing is moving, Colleen. And then there's some travel time, and that's them getting lunch, going home. And then in the afternoon, we're focused more on specials, and that allows them to move around and do some different things, so they're not in a chair in a classroom for that total of six or six-and-a-half hours. And you can see what the Monday would look like, what the Tuesday would look like. They look the same. Then a Wednesday, remote day, and then Thursday, Friday, it flips. They have specials in the morning. There's some core content, independent work. There's lunch, which granted, that's at home this day for them, but there's still lunch. And then some core content, remote check-in. So those days, they're remote. And then Group B, the chart underneath, is really just the opposite. It just shows what it would look like for the students who start with specials on Monday, Tuesday, and they're remote, and then they're actually in-person at the end of the week, the Thursday, Friday, they're with the teacher, and then they would get the lunch, they would go home, and they would do some remote work. So the positive of this, I think, is it limits the amount of time they're in school, which I think, given safety, given the safety precautions, and given the exposure issues that Maynard started to see and could see later, this feels like a safer model. It maintains a six-foot physical distance, and I think we need to keep in mind, we're not going back to September of 2019 or 2018. Education is, like, right now, when we go back into the schools, it doesn't have that same feel. It doesn't have that, oh, I'm so excited to see my teacher and my friends, and we're all hanging out, and we're, you know, we're curious, and there's this great, you know, what we see on a typical year of education, there's these, you know, cooperative groups, and kids are learning, and there's aha moments, and it's pretty exciting on a daily basis. I mean, we love it. This is, this is a different model, not the hybrid, but what the safety precautions put in place for us mean, we're sitting at a desk, we're six feet away from somebody, we're facing forward, everybody's doing that, there's about a dozen kids in the room, there's a teacher at the front. It's very much more student-centered than it has been. We've worked really hard, I think, educationally as a country, to move away from that, to get to an inquiry-based model, but we can't do that in the same way as we used to do it. We will still work, and we all will still work really hard to make this educationally sound, based on best practice, engaging, exciting, but those are, that's a big lift. That is, those are big challenges, given the safety precautions. So I'm showing you this chart, because that's more accurate. I mean, that's more like what we're envisioning the hybrid model to look like for at least grades two through roughly eight. The high school is still really flushing this out in a little more detail to see what works best for their schedule, their curriculum, there's, you know, how do they reach the kids the best they can. So by the end of the week, this is a piece of that further, that plan that will be further developed with a lot more detail. It'll include these types of charts. It'll also include information involving recess, classrooms, mask breaks, transitions, transportation, now that we got the guidance, a little more information... It'll include these types of charts, it'll also include information involving recess, classrooms, mask breaks, transitions, transportation, now that we got the guidance, a little more information about specials and why the recommendations are what they are, but most of that guidance came out Friday.
Brian, will, will it also include how we plan to get remote learning materials to families?
Yep.
Okay, and will students who are fully remote all day on, say, three of the days, will they be getting lunches from the school, or how is that going to work, or do we not know yet?
We don't know yet, but we're, we have a meeting this week with our food service provider.
Okay, bless you.
Bless you, Jennifer.
Natasha.
Brian, so does, so this plan that's in its infancy is under, is with the assumption that this will all happen in buildings, right? We're not exploring tents or outside space, are we? I know some other districts are that I've heard.
We have talked about, oh, go ahead.
No, no, I'm curious because I understand that the CARES Act, it can be reimbursable potentially through the CARES Act funding. And given that Green Meadow with the roof uncertainties and that space, I'm just, would love to hear your thoughts on that.
So that has been part of some of the conversations, and there's several different lines of thought on that. One is, it is a great space outside, it's also New England. So it's a fair amount of money, and it's a limited number of days that is potentially usable. And then we also have, on the same conversations, a group of people saying, hey, did we forget about Alice training? So we've put all these safety precautions into our schools that this flies in the face of some of those decisions. So we haven't made the decision that tents are in our best interest. We have talked about taking kids outside, using the courtyards, at least at the Fowler Middle School and the Green Meadow School, because they have those enclosed courtyards, which seem like they could be used for this as well. But it's still, as you said, it's in, it's in its infancy, and we are exploring all options. That one's not quite as simple as if we were in Southern California and the weather was good all year. It might be a better investment.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you. I know they're not cheap, and I, but I know that they also, certain, certain people run out. Like they get, you know, whatever, if you want, you want them, you have to pretty much order, or you're not. So if that was a thought that was being explored. I mean, I thought the fall, fall weather typically is, is nice, even if it's for, you know, a month or so. But anyway, I'm glad to hear that that's being potentially looked at. And the, the other question that I had was, well, one is more of just, I would really like to see a transition period for special ed, EOL, higher school students to come in before the whole class arrives. I think that will, given, that might help better situate them in their environment and also maybe allow the teacher some comfort where if there is a, you know, dysregulation or something in that situation, all the, all the kids will be already, you know, anxious for this. And I just, you know, wonder if there's some even small, you know, two days that we could consider that.
Um, I, I thought we covered that last week, and that Brian said that they were looking into it.
So it was brought up last week, and I, I think what I said, and I, and I still believe this, that I think all the kids have been under some significant trauma. So having a staggered approach, I think, will be beneficial for all the reasons that you just mentioned. So we are looking at that for all students.
Yes, and I did hear it last week, but I just wanted to reinforce that again at the moment that I could. And then I just also wanted to recognize that all of these hybrid approaches that we're, we're thinking about are really contingent on a school-parent partnership where the school is doing its best in, in approaching the safety implications and all the safeguards and the protocols that have been given for us to follow. But without the support of our community, I, I think that there still can be a breakdown in failure. And so I just would like the community to all recognize that this is really something that is a partnership we all need to work through together to ensure that what's happening in school, we don't have eyes at what happens at people's homes and so forth. And so that impacts all of this tremendously on what, what will be successful or, or not. So I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, Brian.
Yes.
Um, is there anything else that you want to explain or elaborate on?
No, I think that explains the hybrid model. I think I would say that, given the exposure last week, I just want people to know that we are really being thoughtful and inclusive in terms of our discussions, and they range, and they really change daily from, should we be remote, should we be hybrid? We recognize we can't come back like we normally do because we don't have the space or the capacity to do so. And that conversation changes with guidance from the CDC, from the Department of Education, and from our, quite frankly, from conversations with the health agent in Maynard about, do we have exposure and do we have those issues? So the conversations right now are, they're not all over the board. They're really focusing on this layer of, or this level of hybrid and/or how do we transition this to remote? When and if we need to, and there's a pretty strong feeling amongst superintendents regionally that we will need to. That won't be a surprise to anybody. And there's conversations specifically around high school kids because the most recent medical data that's coming out says they are more likely than younger students to get, get sick. So we're looking at, will we need to go to a remote model sooner with that population? We're still fully planning to, you know, implement a hybrid model if the medical data and the metrics allow us to. Because we still see value in face-to-face education. And we will get back there eventually full-time, it just won't be fall of this year.
Okay.
So there, so that's what I like to tell you. There will be a pretty thorough plan coming out by the end of this week. So I, and I think that will answer many of the questions, not all, but most.
All right, thank you. Mary.
Yeah, Brian, are there any other communities that we know of that are also using this template? I know there's been some conversation about how it's, you know, it'd be helpful if, if there was a collaboration between a few, you know, towns so that we could, you know, bounce off of each other. So there are other ones?
There are other districts using the AB model. Exactly who's doing half-day, full-day, still up in the air. So those are still discussions being had, but this is one of the models that different towns are using.
So if I'm reading it correctly, any student is just going to be in school for one full day in the course of a whole week, correct? They're going to be in person.
Yep, that's correct.
Yep, just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly, so.
And I think there is an option, I don't think, there is an option that as the medical numbers go down, that we can ramp this model up, you know, say we reassess in October, November, and there really are no cases in Maynard, any surrounding areas, I'm just being Pollyanna, and I'm very excited about that. We could change this to be still hybrid, but go full day. That would be a step closer to where we want to be. But those are steps that we'll build as we go.
And I, the other thing, Mary, I think to, to keep in mind too, and thinking about a K to eight model or a K to five model, what we're trying to do with this is to prioritize the core content, so the math, science, English, history for the in-person component, and to prioritize to some extent the activities and the lessons that allow for the kind of engagement and excitement that Mr. Haas spoke of, that, that is part of the reason that, that we love teaching and that, that we know students learn best in. And so if you think about a six-hour and 20-minute day, and the number of transitions, including lunch, including different specials that are in there, passing time, things, things of that nature. The four hours, it is less time in person. But it does prioritize some of those core content components. The other thing that we thought there was a benefit in doing it this way is that there was more structure to the remote component so that instead of saying to a teacher or to a student, you're going to see some of your teachers on two days and some of your teachers on, on two other days. Teachers will be, have access to all of their students on all four days rather than waiting for the two days that they have the in-person component. So that was the other way of making sure that all of our students will have access to all of their teachers throughout the week, the week, rather than just the days where they have in-person learning.
Okay.
I had another question, but I know Bethland's, yeah.
Amy, Lydia.
Oh, there you are, sorry. I only have like four people on my thing, so, yes, Bethland.
Thanks, Natasha. So I could speak up too, I just didn't want to. So a couple of things, one is, I apologize, I'm not getting it, I'm looking at this. One, I think it's, it's, it's a, I appreciate the, being able to kind of create it so that there's touch points with the teacher on four days, whether remote or in-person. But you have, so Group A, eight to 12 on Monday and Tuesday, they're in person. Thursday and Friday, it says they were in person, 1:15 to 2:45?
Nope, so essentially on Thursday and Friday, they would have remote, in the morning, they would have remote instruction in their specials. There would be work that would be facilitated around core content from, I think it says, from 10 to noon. And then after lunch, there's an opportunity for checking where the teachers will be setting up check-ins. Again, this is the concept of this. The teachers will be setting up remote check-ins with the student, whether it's small group lessons that they're doing with the students who were remote that day, or whether there's, you know, an instructional component that's happening. But so those would all be Thursday and Friday, those students would be remote only.
Okay, I guess I'm not falling because the chart above, I'm sorry, guys, I'm the only one not getting this.
No, I'm not getting it too, I have actually a question about pre-K.
The, the, the chart above shows Group A having in-school learning on Monday and Tuesday for the first part of the day, and then having in-school learning for the second part of the day on Thursday and Friday.
No, no, it says core content, remote check-in?
No, above.
Above. Colleen, can you go to the above, the above graphic, please?
Graph.
Colored one.
Yeah, the pretty colored one.
Oh, okay. Bethland, if you go across, the top half is Group A, so Monday, Tuesday is in-school learning. Wednesday is independent remote learning, and then Thursday, Friday is remote learning with both.
Then the bottom. Since six this morning, my brain.
Okay, does that make more sense to everybody?
Yes, I think I would have had the two oranges, like across Group A, and the two blues, because I had the exact same thing, Bethland. You had.
Thank you, thank you. Can't read an easy chart. It makes sense, thank you. Okay, so that makes sense to me. And then I do want to, the latest thing that I've seen, and I just want to point this out, I don't think this is, I think this is something, you're talking about teenagers, but it starts at age 10 from the way that, so it's, yeah. So I don't know how schools end up handling that. I appreciate that you're looking at full hybrid. I, and as opposed to remote, the other question I had was, so I just still want to say that, after looking at that and looking at how we accommodate for issues where, how often, like, I was looking at the checklist of when you should keep your child home and what the DSC is recommending. And if you have the sniffles, you stay home. Like, it's, it's very, it seems like there's going to be constant interruption. So I, I, and I would have asked, and you already answered it, because I know you're thinking about this too, about how we keep students, even though they're technically, in your, in my mind, you're picturing them just sitting in a seat because they have to just sit in their seat and they can't get up and like interact and move around, which is going to be very different for them as well. And I've already seen in other circumstances, that's difficult. The one last thing I had a question about was, and I don't know if you've got any answer for this, is, is there an option for anyone who feels the need to say, we aren't going to do any in-person? We are, we are, but a teacher, I don't know, anyone that's involved in this equation to be able to say they go remote instead.
Bethland, can I just say, so when Brian and I were talking today before the meeting, I had asked him just to put this up because people couldn't understand. A lot of people wanted just to have a visual so they could start to conceive of and understand. This is, is one thing that we're fleshing out, but we are also going to be doing the remote only. It's just, this is the one that had the most progress on it and was more visible for us to be able to show. So just because we're discussing this right now does not mean that the remote-only option is not being focused on and is not being developed.
Yep, cool. And not like that's, I mean, it's all so much to be asking. I mean, it's, it's totally re-engineering education as we know it right now. So thank you for what you're doing. The last question I have on those lines then is just, and you've been mentioning this, but if you don't mind going, stepping us through again, timeline for by when you have to, you're going to have, like, you need to say, this is what our district is, is plan, is going to do and commit to something. I would just want to, is there a time at which you have to do that according to the state and the?
Yes, so we need to submit our plan by August 10th.
10th.
August 10th is, that's when that's due. And that will be more similar to the plan that you get at the end of this week, it'll.
Yeah, yeah, so that August 10th date, that's technically until something else changes, until stats change and we're told something different, whatever you submit on August 10th is what you're moving forward with.
Yes.
And I think too, what information folks will be seeing at the end of this week provides a bit more clarity around the direction we're going.
Yeah, 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 cool, thank you. I don't want to get, so that's why I want to just kind of have some sense of this, but I didn't want to, because of exactly what you're saying, I didn't want to get too far into it, but obviously, and me too, in my head, like everyone's just like, everything's still up in the air, and including with you all. You're getting information 10 minutes before this meeting starts. So thank you.
Yes.
Natasha.
Um, Ken, I'm looking at the, the grouping, and I know there was discussion about, was it pre-K through two? They would be onsite four days, is that right?
Uh, so we were looking at pre-K through one for onsite for four days. It does not appear that we are going to be able to do that for grade one just due to the class size because of the, their, the class size is that much larger. And so it mean that there is not room if a family needed to go from remote into hybrid learning. There would not be space for that to occur. So our current thinking is pre-K and K will be prioritized for four days of in-person instruction, and grade one through 12 will be hybrid.
So for pre-K and K then, and that seems a little bit different, I think, than what we talked about last week, but.
It is different, grade one is no longer, it, it, grade one may not be considered for full in-person.
Okay, so for pre-K and K, and they don't really have, well, they do have some specials, right? So how, I'm looking at, like, they're going for four days, right? Because they would still have Wednesday remote. How does that work if I'm looking at like a group, Group A?
So those schedules would be, we have, Robert Rulo, who's the principal of Green Meadow, has drafted schedules for building-specific situations, and those students would have their schedules built in, or their specials built into their daily schedule. I don't, Mr. Haas, I don't know if it's on this document, I think it's on Rob's that he presented.
So this, these are reflective of one through eight, potentially then? Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying that.
For the kiddos who remote learning did not work for, will specials be a requirement? So if they choose a hybrid model and then they go home, and it's just not ideal for them to sit on a screen from 1:15 to 2:45, will they be required to jump into those, or will there be options where they're not having to be on a screen?
So we're not recommending that the remote instruction be 45 minutes or 90 minutes of direct teaching through, through technology. Rather, and again, please understand, everyone who is listening and, and, and school committee, that we are still working out how this will look. But, but one of the things we, we have sort of tossed around with, with the teachers who would be doing this work is the idea of doing a direct instruction, sort of introduction to what the activity would be. And that could be done either live or could be done over a video or things of that nature. And then having inquiry-based or experiential learning to be completed. The other thing that I'm incredibly excited about for our Green Meadow staff and our Fowler staff is today, they were referencing, talking about interdisciplinary connections between the special, specialist teachers and the core content areas. So likely a stronger connection to practicing some of those skills so that folks can see that. So they're really thinking very creatively of how they can make this meaningful for students. And then in terms of the feedback of, you know, this, this is not working for students, things of that nature, we are going to be building in a feedback loop so that we can regularly assess how the model is working for our students, whether it's generally, we need. whether it's generally, we need to address something for everyone because it's just not working out the way we thought it might. Or is it something that we might need to adjust slightly for a few students who, you know, just need something a little bit different? So that's part of what we're using that Wednesday floor will be really to look at some of that data, both in terms of student achievement and in terms of student and family feedback about how are we doing this? And, and how can we get better each week as we go through?
Okay. Mary.
So back to the 170 days, I'm assuming that this falls in sync with that, that requirement, right? With the remotes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And my question was, at what point, and don't answer this if it's too early, because I know we have a lot of people on, but at one, obviously, at some point after August 10th, we're maybe going to be sending out another, like, survey to parents saying, okay, now it's your time to either step up and say hybrid or remote so that then we can make this, so that you guys can make the schedule for what the classes are going to look like. Yes?
We will be sending out another survey, yes.
After August 10th, after there's the definitive plan, so the parents really know what they're looking at?
It'll be close to that date, yes. Once they get the detailed plan at the end of this week, give that, that will provide some time for people to read through it, ask questions. We'll do a couple more parent forums for questions and answers, once they get the more detailed one. And then, yes, we will be surveying, asking that particular question.
Great, thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, that concludes our meeting unless, Brian, you want to make a final statement?
I just want to thank everybody for their patience. This is a long summer for people, especially parents and teachers. Usually, if I think about it as, whether you're the parent, the custodian, the teacher, the principal, it doesn't really matter. You know by June what summer looks like. And quite frankly, you really know what the opening looks like. And this year, nobody knows anything. And it changes every couple of days. So I feel like people have been patient and they're letting us really, let the committees do their work and letting teachers really wrestle with this so that we can put together a plan for the community. And we've reached out to the community. We will continue to engage the community in the conversation and the teachers in the conversation, and ultimately come up with the best plan for the town and Maynard. So I just want to say thank you and everybody. And the school committee, you guys have been great in terms of being supportive and patient and asking good quality questions. So that's it.
Are we going to, oh, a question, one more question? The, the, the detailed plans next week, that's going to include recommendations about transportation, right?
Yep, that'll be this week, just this.
Okay, oh, the one we're getting it then this week, but what we vote on for next week.
Yep.
And Brian, you and I had talked about possibly doing some open, the school committee and you, doing some open session where people could ask questions or submit questions. And there would be a way to alleviate the frustration that people felt last week where they couldn't engage with us. Yeah, okay. Mary, you had a question?
Oh, just a comment. And again, we just can't say it often enough to Brian, to Jennifer, to all of the, the staff, how much work is going into this and how much we really, really appreciate it for, for the kids. So I just want to say thank you again. Can't say it often enough, so, yeah, that's it.
All right.
Thank you. All right, we will end this meeting. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I think motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All right, roll call vote. Mary Brantley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Bethland Houlihan.
Yeah.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you for being here and attending and have a good evening.
Thank you.